I'm now speaking with Kevin Brown, candidate for city council at large. You know, Kevin, you've been involved in the political arena for a while and you were out for a minute or two. Why did you choose to get back into city council? And you know, what can you add to the flavoring of things?
Well, you know, the Lord puts you where he needs you, not where you want to go. I had been paying attention after I stepped away from campaigning. My last campaign there again was for Wayne Community Schools. And before that, it was superintendent of public instruction for the state of Indiana. So, you know, sometimes you've got to get away to get a different perspective. Stepped away, lost election, which was a blessing. Allowed me to really focus what was important to me. Community, family, job. So that was a luxury in that respect. Got a chance to redirect my thoughts, my energy. I've got about less than 30 months now, I can retire from the job. So, you know, when you retire, I mean, you lay down, you still stay active. So it was something that I thought about and took it up on myself to go ahead and investigate and jump back into the political arena. You know, I'm staunch Democrat. A lot of people don't even know what that means, young, you're a candidate for the working class, the working man. And too, I got irritated. I got irritated with the Republican majority on city council that they weren't hearing the cries of the community, of their workers, city employees. They were using a playbook, the state Republican playbook of eliminating people's rights, almost to the point of being a socialist society. You know, we want you to do the job, but we don't want to hear your voice. And that's a message that the Republican majority had sent to this community, that we don't want to hear you. We want you to work and we don't want to hear you. So that was the impetus to jump back into the race to vote true.
But you know, when you say that, that people don't want to hear you, a lot of people actually believe that. I mean, it's manifested itself down to the base of the community, to the extent to where people have become hopeless. And they are unwilling to express how they feel, especially when it comes time to speak to political leaders and leaders of any sort. You know, why, how is that fire state, where did that fire come from in you? To always want to speak up and not be afraid to challenge things that are wrong?
Well, you know, my dad is the foundation of my maturation process and my education and my perceptions. And he told me when I was young, expressed, guided me, said, "Don't let anybody think for you. God gave you a mind to think for yourself. And if you don't know, go research, go learn, go find, go talk, go ask, and come up with your own conclusion." You know, we live in such a fast-paced world today that, you know, we do microwave dinners, we go through drive-bys, drive-through eating entities. Everything's fast, 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 fast. And we want our information fast. At times, people don't even want to make a decision, they want to be told what to do. And I think that's where we get ourselves in trouble. You know, the media tells you who to vote for with the endorsements. At what point in time have we really thought, stopped thinking for ourselves? You know, people today have become so apathetic that they believe somebody will take care of their interests. I remember when Mitch Daniels had gotten elected and came about with the 1% circuit breaker tax. Well, let me jump a little bit ahead, when he got, had gotten elected for the second term, Dr. Robinson, superintendent for Wayne Community Schools, came to me and told me what percentage of statewide teachers, majority, have voted for Mitch. And then after he was elected to a second term, teachers started getting laid off. Today, we see the result of Mitch, Mitch's tenure in the state house of the circuit breaker. And now corporations across the state are having funding problems because there's no longer the tax base, or there's a depleted tax base for school corporations to actually operate. So, you know, decisions that you make or don't make do affect your outcome, your future outcomes.
So, once you get re-elected, what do they say, okay, now you're on the park board, how many, or school board, how many years?
Four years.
How does that experience carry over to help your insights on city council?
Well, you know, school board was a nonpartisan position. We did some wonderful things there. Some of the things we didn't, I didn't agree with, but you know, I don't want to say you have to go along and get along. I was very outspoken on the school board, very union goal-oriented in the sense of when we had to downsize, I was a sole vote against downsizing or eliminating our custodial services. You know, in that respect, I had taken an oath as a member of local 903, USW, and I still work, who said I would never wrong another union brother or sister. You know, I stand by those words and that oath. It allowed me an opportunity to see the under dealings of how to get things accomplished. You know, a lot of candidates come out here and promise you the world of what it is they're going to do when they get elected. Well, the first thing you need to do when you get elected is close your mouth and open your ears, because that's how you learn things. And what you want, you know, is really insignificant because you've got other council members that you have to persuade, that you have to have them buy into what it is that you want. Because in all reality, if the new kid on the block, you're going to be ostracized. You've got to present that you can work with them to accomplish a common goal for the best interest of the community. Your individual agenda, that's a novice's take on the election process of getting elected. Tell them what they want to hear, once I get in, I won't be able to bring forth what I promised. And you know, we've all experienced that, you know, a politician comes around and tells you what he's going to do and then gets in the office and never holds true to his platform. I think the best thing you can say as a candidate is, I can get into office, or when I get into office, I'll do the best job that I possibly can to serve my constituency based on the people that you elect to allow me to serve with. You know, help me, help you, help us, you know, move forward.
So, once you get in, what do you want to do first? You know, what are your initial objectives or initiatives once you get on council?
Well, the major thing here is the common wage problem that we're having, where, you know, the Republican majority here in the county and the city and the state wants you to believe that the common wage on construction benefits citizens. It doesn't. You had me comment about FWCS and what I learned. Well, we did the same thing with the improvement on North Side, South Side. When I was a coach at South Side, I was out in the stadium. We finished South Side in 96, dedicated to the old Ninety Yards, opened the door, new stadium, new swimming arena, which has my name on it, Helen P. Brown Auditorium. And 90, mm, 2000, I'm out in the stadium. And it's spring, just like it is now, I believe it was March or April timeframe, the rainy season, or the ice, and it started leaking. The stadium, I got puddles of water inside the stadium, the locker room. And I go to the principal and I say to him, "Man, I got water coming in the locker room, what can we do?" You know? Well, come to find out, I went on down town to central office and was talking to the central office and, common wage, you only get the least experienced individual. Understand that. The least experienced, not the most experienced. Look at a construction effort in itself. If you're going to pay me minimal wages, I'm not going to give you my best tenured worker. I'm going to give you my journeyman. I'll oversee it, but you'd get my journeyman. And I give you, this was what the kicker was, a one-year guarantee on construction. So if anything happens after that 365th day, you're on your own. So in the long run, you know, it's like the old Graham oil filter commercial, you can pay me now, you can pay me later, because I'm going to have to come back and fix what, in essence, I did initially, because I didn't give you my best people. That's what common wage is about.
You know, is this in your blood? I mean, you mentioned Helen Brown. Your family tends to be somewhat political here, it seems as though.
Well, we've always served, you know? My great-grandfather hired Martin Luther King down at First Baptist Church in Charleston, West Virginia. You know, we like to believe Martin Luther King was the father of the civil rights, you know, long before somebody gets acknowledged, just other trailblazers. Vernon Johns was a trailblazer. He was the pastor, First Baptist Church in Charleston, West Virginia. I was born in Charleston, West Virginia.
Vernon Johns was your relative?
No, Vernon Johns was a pastor and my great-grandfather was the associate pastor at First Baptist Church in Charleston, West Virginia. So, I tell the truth, there again, Booker T. Washington would come to the house and have dinner with the family. So, you know, as I'm hearing all these stories, my uncle Tom, who had passed away on the 14th of December, was baptized by Vernon Johns.
Tom Brown?
Yeah, was baptized. My dad was baptized by Vernon Johns. You know, this is truly the father of the civil rights movement. Very outspoken, if you know anything about Vernon Johns. You know, as a little kid, I heard about all the stories and the old Ninety Yards, Charleston. But I think that's how it got ignited in me, you know? Because people's rights were being taken away, you know? Travesties were occurring, you know? If we live by our constitutional creed, you know, we should all be treated fairly and equal, and we haven't been. You know, we're seeing this now with the city council.
Household?
Well, you know, the collective bargaining. Now, how do you take somebody's rights away to be heard? Voices. Do the job, don't be heard. I want to see you, not hear you. And believe they're right. That's what gets me. They believe they're right. And, you know, and some of the professionals on the board, how would they feel that if, based with their experience and what it is that they've done, to get to the point of their profession, now to be seen and not heard, or those rights, or certain rights, to be taken away from them? That's not right.
You know, one of the things that we want to do here with this series, with the Candace, is turn this into a documentary to hopefully get through to not only high school and middle school students, college students, but people in general, so that they'll have something to look, to look at or to read that will inspire them to get into the process. Does that approach have any accuracy?
Oh, yeah. You've got to work with the, at the college level, the high school level. You've got to get young people excited about the process. If you don't get them excited about the process, they become apathetic. And once you, that happens, there's no passion in your community. Things happen. Attitudes change. The content of the, the voice of the community is, my one vote's not going to matter.
But that's out here though.
Yeah, and that's out there, out here right now. So we've got to be actively engaged in addressing politics, I guess, politricks, in our schools, at our university level, in our high school level, to inform our young people that they do make a difference, that this is their community. And they have to get excited about being part of the community because they are a voice.
You know, but we're, especially in certain areas, I don't want phrases, black community, I sit that away. To a certain extent, again, people are feeling powerless and, well, in fact, all across the city, I was, a person told me the other day that, that people on the South Side don't vote in the primaries. And then when I was at a council meeting here recently, Crawford said that 13% voted last year in the entire city primary. So that means it's poor all over the place.
True.
So what has happened to create that condition?
Well, we can't just look at the Southeast side either. If we're looking at 13% across the board, our last census, I think we had somewhere around 200, maybe a little short, less than 300,000 people in the city, 400 and something thousand in the county. So if you're looking at 13% out of the 300,000, yeah, my math is leaving me, 39,000 people voted out of 300,000? That's just can't, we don't have that many people in Southeast. So you're talking about Northeast, Southwest, and Northwest didn't vote either, so.
So appetite is down all over?
All over, you know? You know, the only time people really came out is during the presidential election. We know that. I can recall, oh, it might have been '08, we had a primary and it was like 7% or 8% showed up to vote. Because, you know, it was a primary, non-presidential primary. People have to get passionate about voting, about expressing their views, or not taking the position of, you know, my one vote doesn't count, because it does. There was somewhere up in Northeast Indiana that somebody lost by one vote and they had to do a recount because the challenger had lost and, you know, there has to be an error here, you know, one vote, one vote, one vote, you know, I, yeah. There had to be something in the absentee ballot that wasn't, there might have been one that wasn't counting. Well, one vote does make a difference. So, you just, we have to be engaged. We have to get our young people engaged in the process.
But you know, there are a lot of people who consider themselves to be intellectual, and they will tell you right straight up, my vote makes no difference.
Well, I guess they're protected by the man above, because, you know, he protects fools, children, and old people. So if they're, if they're senior citizens, they hit two categories, because their vote does count, you know?
Well, you know, people, for people who don't really know you that well, you know, what kind of leadership can they expect from you? How will you be a benefit to the entire city that you intend to represent?
Well, you know, I had expressed this at the Sheet Meadows Forum the other day. I negotiated Air Force One. I've been engaged in politics and working for my government, with my government. I wrote the subcontract for the GPS satellite system for low-rout space systems, so, you know, I'm tracking them. I stay passionate about what it is that I do. On the Fort Wayne Common Council, as it's called, you know, the name really hasn't changed. We make it, we presented it as city council, but it's common council, 1947. It was deemed common council, haven't changed. I do my research, as I said a little bit earlier. Close your mouth, open your ears. It's like a boxing match, you've got to feel your way through something to be successful. The only way that you can learn is to open your ears. We've all got opinions and perspectives and attitudes on issues and certain things, but you've got to learn the job to do the job. And my experience in past employment opportunities and sitting on former boards have allowed me to bring a different perspective to a difficult job. Mind you, on FWCS, our budget was way larger than the city budget. The city budget comes in somewhere around 180, maybe 170 million a year. 2000, before we started getting the cuts, 2006, 2007 budget, I think we were somewhere up there around 300 million. So we were almost $130 million more that we had to work with the city government. I remember Mark the Aquino saying, "This is so much more difficult than sitting on the city council." And, you know, Mark was a former president of the city council. So, you know, it had merit to what he was saying, because it is, it was a difficult job sitting on the FWCS board, not to belittle Fort Wayne City Council, but, you know, when your budget's larger, when you're the largest employer in the county, and Fort Wayne Community Schools is the largest employer, you have a lot more problems. So I'm familiar with the entities that need to occur to be successful in all that type of positions.
One last thing here. You know, what is your vision for Fort Wayne? Because there's not a focus being put on creating stronger, more inclusive environment here. And as we do that, I've noticed that some entities want to only embrace the Hispanics and the Burmese and the Vietnamese and the groups who are newly here, gay community and the short people and the fat ones and people who are dieting, all that. And I kind of contend that if we want to have a community of inclusion, that means that at some point in time, people were excluded.
Right.
And so, is there a way to bring in the black history and the Indian history so that we can learn from this whole concept of inclusion? I mean, that's kind of a broad question, but do you have an easy answer for that?
Well, first, you've got to have buy-in, okay? You've got to have buy-in that, you know, we all know what Fort Wayne's about. Fort Wayne's a great place to live, a great place to raise kids. Once they raise the kids, the kids want to take a massive exit of the soil, you know? We need a tagline. I was in Orlando with a school board national conference and I'm with Steve Corona. And one morning at breakfast, I look at Steve and I said, "You know, we used to be known as the city of churches, Fort Wayne, Indiana. What are we known as now? We don't have a tagline. We're just Fort Wayne, Indiana. What attracts people? What brings people to our community? If I'm passionate and I'm in love and I want a significant other and I want a better life, to start, I can come to Fort Wayne. But what's going to keep me afterwards? And as our kids grow up, the first thing they want to do is take off, because they look at it as, there's nothing here for me. I can't grow anymore. I've matured. My maturation process has matured to the age of 18. Now's time for me to get out, to see the world. Well, the world can be here, but we have to define what it is that we want to be known as. We're not the city of churches anymore, but we don't have a tagline. What are we? Yeah.
And how would you pose that that be created? I mean, that's kind of a serious question, because I've been working with people who are trying to do that, and when they took your survey, they had very little black involvement and very little Latino involvement. And a lot of times, it's hard to get those groups engaged in a project from downtown like that, that's trying to create an identity. So therefore, either we have to do that separately and bring it to downtown.
Well, we would have to get together as a community and have a common interest that incorporates all of our diversity within the community, that could be seen on a national level and everybody would see a landmark, because we don't have a landmark. Say, "That's Fort Wayne, Indiana. That's Fort Wayne, Indiana." You know, we, we've got a beautiful stadium, you know, baseball stadium downtown, but not everybody knows about our stadium, and it's not a landmark, it's a building, it's an ice building. We need a landmark, something that might be 25 stories, you know, like the Seattle Nito or the St. Louis Park, that says, "That's Fort Wayne, Indiana." Things are happening there, a landmark, we don't have it. So as a community, collaboratively, come together and come about with a landmark that all our diversity is contained within that landmark, that's the selling point. Because people move as a result of their children, they want to provide a strong, safe environment for their kids. And that's what our major attraction is here. Our school systems? We've got good school systems here. I think we could have better with our largest one. But I'm not going down that avenue. I divorce myself from that entity, so.
Okay, as you close out here, any last thing you want to share with people about yourself?
I think if you take the time and you listen to what I say, I'm very candid and I'm very honest with those that. I think if you take the time and you listen to what I say, I'm, I'm very candid and I'm very honest with those that I speak with. I'm, I'm passionate about anything that I get engaged with. I'm a Virgo. Sometimes I'm, I'm, I'm too passionate, uh, because I'm too much of a perfectionist. I, I know what the job entails, city council. I'm not naive enough, uh, to make promises that I can't fulfill. I'm smart enough to get things accomplished. So, uh, on, uh, in May, I'd love to have the vote, uh, in the primary.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And thank you for watching.